Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Lindup School District 92 Board of Education meeting to order at 7:00 PM. May I have a roll call, Ms. Suarez?
Yes, Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Present.
Board Member Arrington.
Present.
Board Member Griffin.
Absent.
Board Member Dawson.
Present.
Board Member Hannah.
Absent.
Board Member Taylor.
Present.
Board Member Williams Wolford.
Absent.
Thank you.
We do have a quorum. There's four board members that are present, so we'll continue. At this time, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to pause for a moment of silence on behalf of our students, our family and their families, as well as our district, our state, our nation, as well as the world that's experiencing this unprecedented pandemic. Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on to public comments. As I understand, there are none. Dr. Jackson?
Correct, Madam President, they are none.
Thank you. Upcoming events in correspondence. Ms. Griffin, are you on at this time? Ms. Arrington, can you please read the correspondence, please?
All I have right now is that, and it's informational, the dates, and then the other thing is, I have, yes. West, dear Denise Jackson, I am pleased that your district is participating in the 2020 School Citizen of the Year Award Program. The awardees from your district include Rhine/Washington Lindup, Michaela Burris-Lindup. Your district's School Citizen of the Year will be recognized March 12th in the ceremony, in a ceremony at 4:00 PM in the auditorium of West Lighten High School, 1,000 North Worth Road, North Lake, 60164. Each school's Citizen of the Year will receive a medal, certificate, and a copy of the School Citizen of the Year Honor Roll Book. The students' entries in the Honor Roll Book include the nominating teachers and principals' names and a brief description of why each student was selected. The awards will be presented to the students in numerical order of the district and the alphabetical order of the schools within the district. Refreshments will follow the entertainment and award presentations. Please join us at the award ceremony and the reception that follows. The students', parents, teachers, and principals are also invited to the ceremony and reception. West 40 appreciates the ongoing support you and your colleagues have given to this agency. The governing board and staff of West 40 continue to strive to provide you with the service of the union.
Thank you very much, Ms. Arrington. I guess the students already received that award. Congratulations to the two students that received that great award.
Yes, they did receive the award, although the program had to be canceled due to COVID-19.
Thank you very much. We just have to make sure they get some type of recognition for it at a later time on behalf of the school. Some announcement. Thank you again. Moving on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Yes. I make a motion that the board approve the consent agenda, including payroll from March 2020 in the amount of $402,227.40, the activity account reconciliation from March 2020, and the accounts payable from March 2020 in the amount of $248,612.98. And this is Vicky Arrington, by the way.
In a second, please.
I, Erin, have a second.
And a roll call, Ms. Suarez?
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Yay. Motion carries. On to new business. I need a recommendation to approve the regular open session meeting minutes for February 18, 2020.
Make a motion, this is Vicky Arrington. I make a motion that the board approve the regular open session meeting minutes for February 18, 2020.
And a second, please.
My second.
Any discussion at all? There is none. Roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the emergency open session meeting minutes, please, for March 13.
I make a motion, this is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion to approve the regular closed session meeting minutes for February 28, 2020.
Thank you, Cheryl. And a second, please.
Second.
This is Tanya Taylor, second.
Any discussion, any questions, any revisions? There are none. Roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Now it's time to approve the emergency open session meeting minutes for March 13. Need a motion, please?
This is Vicky Arrington. I make a motion that the board approve the emergency open session meeting minutes for March 13, 2020.
And a second, please?
I, Erin, have a second.
Are there any questions, revisions? There are none. Roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. We need a motion to approve the special closed session meeting minutes for March 17, please.
I, Erin, have a second. Make a motion that the board approve the special closed session meeting minutes for March 17, 2020.
And a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Are there any revisions, any questions? There are none. Roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
I abstain. I wasn't, I was absent.
Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve the special closed session meeting minutes for March 17, please.
Vicky Arrington, I make a motion that the board approve the special closed session meeting minutes for March 17, 2020.
And a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
And a roll call, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Taylor.
I'm sorry. Are there any questions, any revisions at all regarding that meeting?
This is for March 17, 2020, correct? Tanya Taylor?
This is a closed session, yeah. Okay. Go right ahead, Ms. Suarez. Roll call, please. Thank you.
Board Member Taylor.
I abstain. I wasn't at the meeting.
Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to the recommendation to approve, to recognize Mr. Andrew Rouse, former Board of Education member for his contribution to the Lindup School District 92 1-on-1 Technology Initiative, as well as Mayor Katrina Thompson for her partnership and collaboration with Lindup School District 92 to secure $20,000, $25,000 from the Bosch Foundation. Motion, please?
I make, this is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion to approve, to recognize Mr. Andrew Rouse, former Board of Education member for his contributions to the Lindup School District 92 1.1 Technology Initiative, and Mayor Katrina Thompson for her partnership and collaboration with Lindup District 92 to secure $25,000 from the Bosch Foundation.
And a second, please? All right. So Penny asked if this be put on the agenda. No, she's not here today in regards to Mr. Andrew Rouse. But I think I could communicate what she wanted to communicate. Years ago, when Lighten District initiated the 1-on-1 technology in their district, they were the leaders in technology. We really, at that time, I think we were the leaders. We were the first to have a Promethean board in every room. But Mr. Rouse is somebody that was driven to to secure or at least encourage this district to have 1-on-1 computers. He was relentless. He never, he would always bring it up. We would, you know, we would discuss it. But it was important to have a plan, a plan that was effective and didn't overwhelm the school. We did it in a systemic way. We had a pilot with the fourth grade teacher. And over a period of time, that created, you know, that actually evolved into the entire district having 1-on-1 computers. And Penny thought, I thought it was a great idea, especially during the time right now, how we have, how we've needed these for our students and how we have them in place already. We don't have to order them like other districts. And she thought of that, and she just thought it would be a great idea to recognize him. Everybody knows about Katrina Thompson, and I'll let Dr. Jackson communicate that part.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, Board of Education, staff, and community members. During my tenure here at Lindup, it has been evolutionary, and when Mayor Katrina Thompson came in as the mayor, she immediately reached out to see how she might be able to help us. And she not only talked about it, but she showed up for us. She called me one day when I was in my office, and she said, "Tell me how I might be able to support the school." And I worked with the administrators, and they gave me some ideas of some things that we could possibly utilize some help with. And one was our library to update some of the books to include more nonfiction items. And then the other was the crosswalk, which was probably most significant because our fifth grade classes, our teachers, Mrs. Ebony Jones, as well as Mrs. Opares Oforo, their students, while looking at the Scholastic magazine, were able to read about cross, virtual crosswalks, and how it saved lives, and especially the lives of children. So they all wrote personal letters to Mayor Katrina Thompson, and she was thrilled with the idea. She went right away and contacted IDOT to see if this could be done. And she did not stop until it was something that we would be able to do. We were able to garner $25,000 in a grant from Bosch Foundation because of those two items and because of Mayor Thompson's relentless work and collaboration with Lindup School District 92. So I'm very, very excited about that. Thank you, Mayor Thompson.
I would like to have some discussion among the board members. Is there anyone that would like to make any comments or have any questions about, any comments about either one of these potential recognitions?
No, this is Cheryl Griffin. No questions. I would just like to voice that I am very appreciative of the two of them for their contributions to Lindup.
Thank you. Okay. If there's not, I do want to say, out of all the mayors that we've had, you know, in Broadview, she's definitely, she's been one of the most involved mayors that I've ever seen, not only in Broadview and almost anywhere. She has always supported Lindup School District 92, as well as all the school districts that are related to Broadview, you know. So it's such a wonderful thing to have our mayor be frontline in almost every activity that we have at this district. So without further ado, we have had a have a roll call. Please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Moving on to item number seven. Recommendation, I need a recommendation to approve the superintendent's declaration, please.
This is Vicky Arrington. I make a motion that the board approve the superintendent's declaration regarding forthcoming Title IX rule pending legal review.
And a second, please?
Cheryl Griffin, I second.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Yes, good evening again. So the Title IX rules and regulations are in the forefront of controversy because the Trump administration, and specifically Betsy the Boss, would like to change those rules, and it would require victims of sexual abuse and any type of trauma to have to be questioned by anyone that she is accusing or he is accusing that has committed the crime. We do know that if children are answering questions over and over and by various people, and if they are not protected, the trauma is impacted more greatly and severely. And so the Attorney General's Office did contact me as I serve on the Illinois School Board Association's, Illinois Association of School Administrators, and also the Illinois School Board of Education Task Force, which is represented by Representative Crespo, and trying to make sure that all victims are safe. Another huge advocate for that is the Children's Advocacy Centers. They are playing another significant role. But they wanted a school district or someone to be able to speak up on the behalf of the children to say that asking additional questions and having them to have to come before more people would be more traumatizing. And so that is what the declaration entails. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm sorry, I had to unmute that again. If there are no questions, we need a roll call, Ms. Suarez.
Okay. Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Need a motion to approve to attend the CUBE Annual Conference, please.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion to approve to attend the NSBA Council for Urban Boards of Education CUBE Annual Conference for Board of Education members and Superintendent Jackson in Houston, Texas from Wednesday, September 23, 2020, until Sunday, September 27, 2020.
And a second, please?
Vicky Arrington, second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Just to let, just to communicate that due to COVID, it may be something that might be canceled. But I know that our district was, we were approved to do a presentation in regards to equity, correct, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. So this, this one is the CUBE one in Houston, and that's for all of the board members. The one that you're talking about, the presentation on equity, is going to be in a further, another recommendation that is for.
Okay, okay. I thought we were doing a cute one, too, but thank you.
This is, no, we're not. We have not, we have not sent out anything yet.
Okay.
We're hopeful.
Well, there's a chance that this might be deferred anyway, but we were approving it just in case it did get approved. Are there any questions for any board members at all? If not, we need a roll call, Ms. Suarez, please.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Need a motion to approve to attend the NSBA Council, ooh, let's see, what's the next? The Triple I Conference, please.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion to approve to attend the Triple I Conference for Board of Education members, Superintendent Jackson, administrators, and district secretary, Mrs. Suarez, November 19 through 22, 2020, in Chicago, Illinois.
And a second, please?
A second, Erin.
And this conference is also a tentative conference as well. Of course, it's a long time from now, but they seem to be discouraged in large events, maybe through the end of the year, but we'll get up, we'll get an update as time goes on. So we're just trying to prove this ahead of time if the conference is approved to continue. So there are no other comments. We need a roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
And Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item number 10, I need a recommendation to approve the, to apply for the pre-K for all grants.
Good morning, Board of Education, community members.
I just need a motion before we do that. We need a motion, please, before we discuss? Hold on one second. Ms. Arrington?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was muted. I just unmuted. I make a motion that the board approve the application for the pre-K for all grants in the amount of $127,786 per year for five years at a total amount of $638,430.
Thank you. And a second, please?
Tanya Taylor, second.
Thank you. Hey, Mr. Whitehead, thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Board of Education, good evening, good Board of Education, community members, staff, and administration. Wanted to talk today about the pre-K for all grant. This was another opportunity that was provided to apply for the grant. This was our third time applying, so if you all remember the last two years that we, the first year, we did not receive, and we went for the expansion. Last year, we applied as well, but we actually scored high enough to receive funds, but the state ran out of, so we did not receive funds. One of the challenges that we have been facing every year that we applied for the grant was that the data that was requested that we used by the state was 10 years old, and it did not reflect the demographic of Broadview and Lindup School District in terms of demonstrating a need. Because part of the grant does, when you demonstrate a higher level of need, it gives you additional points as well, which improves your score. This year, I do, I'm very, very excited about the way the grant was put together. It was a true collaborative effort between Dr. Jackson, Mrs. Schoenheider, myself, Dr. Betts, Mr. Ellis Q., and also our data consultant, Jessica Linz, because we were able to create and receive new data that accurately reflected what Lindup looked like in terms of determining and showing need, and that was placed there. That was, that was, and then to our community, our family members via electronically for, by Dr. Betts and Mr. Ellis Q. So it made a huge difference in terms of demonstrating the need that we have at Lindup. And it's another reason why we always want to, we always want to stress that everyone takes care and completes their census because now the new data, hopefully, the next, you know, that'll be, that we'll be able to use will be more reflective, so it's always important to do that. In terms of the funding, it's going to cover 3.0 FTE salary and benefits, one teacher, a pair of professional instructional lead, field trip entrance fees, guest speakers for programs, apparent organizations, some training and professional development that we usually utilize, bus for transportation to those field trips, supplies and materials for our parent education program. So once again, we're just looking for a way to supplement, you know, our current program that we're doing. And the other part that I want to say is that we have traditionally not been able to receive or demonstrate, you know, the good that we're doing with our full-day program, which I'm very fortunate and thankful that the board has supported that program the last three years. So this year, we are looking to be able to, we'll be able to look at the funding so that we can, we can now have grants, funds, looking at our full-day program. It's not an expansion program, but we're just going to be able to utilize that as the program of record. So now we can get credit for that program. We can utilize the data moving forward to demonstrate what we're doing, our need, and all the good work that we're doing because, because it would now be service and receiving funds from the state. So that is, that is our hope. I'm very confident, once again, that we'll do well. We've improved on our score every year, and I think this year will improve even more. So, you know, once that happens, the hope is just that there is enough funding to go around this year, and we can get funded.
Thank you so much, Mr. Whitehead.
Any questions for any board members at all? There are none? Need a motion? I mean, we need a roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Hannah.
Yay.
Board Member Taylor.
Yay.
Board Member Jordanna Harrod.
Yay.
Board Member Arrington.
Yay.
Board Member Griffin.
Yay.
Board Member Dawson.
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item number 11, I need a recommendation to approve the 55 five-year licenses for Cisco Meraki Enterprise Cloud Controllers, please.
Okay, so this is Vicky Arrington. I'll make a motion that the board approve the purchase of 55 five-year licenses for Cisco Meraki Enterprise Cloud Controllers and AT&amp;APC American Power Conversion Corporation Backpack Batteries for. for the 2021 school year at a total cost of $21,541.62 contingent upon receipt of E-rate funding of $18,311.22 and Lindup's cost of $3,231.40.
Thank you, and a second, please.
This is Tanya Taylor, second.
Any questions or barriers that?
That's 55-year or five-year?
Five-year, 55-five-year. Purchase of 55-five-year licenses. So Josh, can you, who's going to give an update about this motion?
Good evening, Board of Education, Community Members, public teachers. So the E-rate is pretty to funding, and we got an additional $18,313.95 for the 2021 school year. E-rate, we, we received $62,872.50 over the past five years, and then the government somehow had extra money to, to spend because the schools not using the money. So we've got additional $18,000 for one year. So we could take the money or lose it for not applying for it for one year. So what I am recommending to the board is we buy 55 Cisco Meraki Cloud Controllers. This is what we currently have now, so we're just buying the subscription, then 18 APC backup power supplies at a total cost of $21,541.62. And our cost would be about $32, $32.3140. And that concludes my presentation. Questions?
Are there any questions for board members? Josh, can you tell us about the cloud controllers? Is it just something, tell me how, what, what they do?
Our internet currently runs on the cloud controllers. It's something we already have, so it's just additional licenses. We already have about two and a half more years left on our licenses, so we're buying more licenses for that. Now, they are changeable, so if we decide to upgrade our Merakis to a newer Meraki, they will still roll over, but this is something we already have. We're just buying more licenses for the year, so it's been successful when we implemented this a couple of years ago.
Thank you.
Just, this is board member Brian Dawson. Just so I understand, these are like, like, kind of like hotspots, and we use them throughout the school, is that what they are?
Exactly, that's the Wi-Fi hotspots, but we pay a license fee for them per year. For 50, so we have 55 hotspots, and that covers it for, for five years, so we'll have about seven and a half years if you approve this.
Any more, any other questions from our technology people at all? I'm sure you guys are probably informed about it. If there are no more questions, we, roll call, please, Ms. Suarez?
Yes, board member Will, sorry, board member Taylor?
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. I need a recommendation for the business office to work with the finance committee and all stakeholders regarding the school budget.
This is Tanya Taylor. I'm making a recommendation, a motion that the board approves that the business office be allowed to work with the finance committee and all stakeholders to prepare the Lindup School District 92, 2020 through 2021 school budget.
And a second, please.
Board member Brian Dawson, I second.
Thank you. Mr. Veranik?
Okay, Josh, could you go to the timeline? There you go. Briefly, board, this is a tentative timeline for the budget calendar that's out there. I am looking at all different departments, looking at revenue estimates, expenditure estimates. And as you look at this timeline, this would meet the guidelines by ISB for adopting our FY21 budget for next year. With it, as you know, there is a lot of talk out there with the state that a lot of things are very tentative right now due to the COVID virus and how it's going to impact spending on next year. So we need to be very careful when creating our budget. But I just wanted to give the budget calendar to highlight what will be, what will be, the business office will be working on with developing our next year's budget.
I'm sorry, here we go with that mute again. I was asking, were there any questions from any other board members? If there are none, Ms. Suarez, need a roll call, please?
Board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Yay.
Board member Hannah? Board member Taylor?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay, discussion on 2020 Summer Life Projects, that's you also, Mr. Veranik.
Okay, good evening again, board, staff and community members. Lindup did put out a formal bid for the HVAC controls upgrade. We put out the advertisement in the newspaper on February 26th. We did have a pre-bid meeting on the 27th. We had three vendors who contacted Archon, our architect, to get the bid documents. And our bid opening was on March 10th, and on March 10th, we received two out of three vendor bids. So not bad, we would have liked to have all three bid. We did get some significant cost difference with the bids. How this bid was broken out for the HVAC controls was it was going to do half the building as the base bid, and then the alternate one was to do the other half of the building with it. If you look at this, you know, my biggest concern was is the price difference between contractor one and contractor two with it. And this is also significantly higher than what the estimate was in our life safety survey as to what the cost would be for upgrading the controls throughout the building. Archon's recommendation for Lindup was to extend the contract to Interactive Building Solutions to accept the base bid, and if there was money, accept both the base bid and the alternate one. This way, you would be all upgraded on it. At this particular time, after talking with Mr. Ballantyne and going through the pros and cons as far as do we accept the bid, do we not accept the bid? At this particular time, the recommendation is to reject all the bids at this time, at this time. The reason being with the economy uncertain and this COVID. Like I said, the recommendation is to reject due to the economy and the uncertainty with the coronavirus that's causing the impact on potential state budgets. And everything that I've been hearing from business managers and documentation is if it's not a necessary fix, hold off on it. The biggest thing here is, yes, our controls are outdated, but they are working. Mr. Ballantyne assured me that they are working, and if anything had to be repaired, we would just do it on a case-by-case basis to repair anything that wouldn't be syncing with our current system.
Okay. Thank you very much, it's not a motion, any, are there any questions regarding this recommendation? Okay, there are none? Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to a discussion on the Raymond Jones G17 disclosure. Mr. Veranik?
Good evening, once again. The first thing that I just want to mention about what is a G17 engagement? The G17 engagement is a legal document that would need to be approved by the board, which would allow Raymond James to do a more thorough look at the financial options for the district moving forward to cover life safety and capital projects and/or operating expenses. We do have some significant life safety expenses coming up in the near future that are going to have to be addressed, and what this G17 engagement to work with Raymond James, it would allow them to come up with potential financing options available to the district. And just so that the board would know, you really have two options for paying for these life safety and capital projects in the future. Number one, you can use fund balance, which currently we have a strong fund balance, but with the uncertainty in the current economy and the state of the state budget in the state of Illinois, we're looking at other options to explore to potentially not eat into our fund balance and maintain that. By looking at this G17 engagement and agreeing to do it, it would allow them to work on different pricing options. I did have several questions that I brought forth to Raymond James before make any type of recommendation. I asked, you know, what is the cost if the district were to issue bonds in the future? And it's $7 per every $1,000 of bonds issued. I said, okay, that's great, how about, what is the length of this engagement with it? It's ongoing until either the district decides to issue bonds, or we can put a cancellation in. All they need is 30 days' notice, and they are no longer bond counsel, working with the district to explore options. There is no cost to the district if Raymond James does work, and even though they give us options, and if the board decides not to go with issuing any bonds, no cost to the district. But what I'm recommending is agreeing to the G17 to allow Raymond James to work for one year to work on potential financing options to cover future life safety costs that are already identified in our 10-year life safety.
Okay. There's not, any comments from any, any board members or questions regarding this Raymond James G17 disclosure? There's not a motion on the table, but I guess we'll hear more about this, Mr. Veranik, as time goes on?
Um, yes, but what I, what I would like to do, there is some, you know, background data collection that I got to get to Raymond James. And I'm not the expert in the financial, you know, options. And it would be nice just to, you know, get this signed and try to have one of the experts from Raymond James come out and give a presentation. Or do it virtually, and just saying, here's what potentially the district could do with future financing of projects.
There's not a motion on the table right now, but that's something I think we can have on the agenda so board members can be more informed, that shouldn't be a problem.
This is board member Brian Dawson. Doesn't it say that you want to enter into an engagement with them in April 2020? So is that like, like now?
Yeah, that would have been from this particular board meeting up until March of next year, which would have been the one-year engagement, but it can always be moved to May through April.
Yeah. Okay, so then we'll, we'll talk about it, because we probably need to understand it a little bit more anyway. It's good to have a presentation before we agree to do anything. So I think that that's something that we, you know, any thoughts, Dr. Jackson, regarding that? You have that on the agenda for next month?
Absolutely, we'll have it on there for May, thank you.
And it doesn't impact anything by delaying it a month, does it, Mr. Veranik?
Uh, no, it does not.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that, Mr. Dawson. Any other questions from any other board members?
Uh, this is Cheryl Griffin, it's just a statement. It's that if we're anticipating having it for May, by the time we have May's board meeting, that's going to be a little late, isn't it? If you're including the month of May on it. So unless we want to arbitrarily say it starts at June, if we're waiting to May's board meeting to make any decisions on it.
Well, I think the presentation will allow us to decide if we do want to do it or not, because, and we can, we can start the contract whenever we want to as a board. You know, there's a lot going on right now, I don't think it's such a pressing thing. But of course, it's a great idea, but it's nothing that, we had to talk about this in the board meeting, and this is something that's going to be recommended for some, in 2021, if, if the board agrees. But that time could always be, and I think that it'll, it'll do good to understand, because bonds are, is a very long tedious process. It'll definitely be worth our weight to, to be able to think about it and make sure we all get fully informed about it. If it's something we as a board decide to do. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Veranik. Moving on to old business. I need a recommendation to approve the resolution to amend board policy 830, please.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion to approve to adopt a resolution to amend board policy 8.30.
Dr. Jackson, I'm sorry. And a second, please.
Tanya Taylor, second.
Thank you. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, policy 830 is visitors too and conduct on school property. And the amendment would happen where they are saying that no one is to have any type of firearm on the property. The policy would be amended to say that the only person who would be allowed on the property with a firearm would be the safety officer.
Are there any questions or comments from any board members, any questions? Okay, if there are none, need a roll call, please, Ms. Suarez?
Yes, board member Arrington? Yay, I'm sorry.
Yay. Uh-huh.
Board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Upstate.
Board member Hannah?
Yay.
Board member Taylor?
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a recommendation to approve item number two, to adopt a resolution to establish the position of school safety officer, please.
No, 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 no. Oh, is this it?
Yeah, that's the second one. Is that correct, correctly written? Is there something wrong? Do we need to amend that? Is it correct, okay. Need a motion, please?
This is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion to approve to adopt a resolution to establish the position of school safety officer.
And a second, please.
Vicky Arrington, second.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes, and so currently, we have the position of safety officer, but this would allow us to have the position of armed school safety officer. That is the only change in the position. Are there any questions?
There are no questions? Ms. Suarez, can you please poll the board?
Yes, board member Griffin?
Yay.
Board member Dawson?
Nay.
Board member Hannah?
Yay.
Board member Taylor?
Yay.
Board member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board member Arrington?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next, I need a motion to adopt a resolution. Is that the right one? No, I'm sorry, I need a motion to employ a school safety officer, please.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion to approve to adopt a resolution to employ a school safety officer.
And a second, please.
Vicky Arrington, second.
Dr. Jackson? Any comments, any?
I guess the only change in this as well as stating that the school safety officer would be armed, that is the only change.
Well, can I ask a question? I didn't ask the, the other one, the other motion we just made. Does it need to say the word armed in there? Does it need to say armed, safety school officer, or just the way it's written is fine?
Because it's in the resolution.
I see. Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion, any more questions? Roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Dawson? Board Member Hannah?
Wait, for a second, Mr. Dawson?
Oh, nay, sorry.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve to adopt a resolution on emergency suspension of policy 2240, please, and policy 4180.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion to approve to adopt a resolution on emergency suspension of policy 2.240 and policy 4.180 due to COVID-19 pandemic.
And a second, please.
Vicky Arrington, second.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes, the IASB is recommending a resolution. So during COVID-19, there are many different things that come up all of a sudden and so that we do not have to always have, or the board would not always have to have a board meeting. This would allow the superintendent to be able to make the decision in the event of a crisis as we are in now, such as closing schools or extending lunches, making sure the children have devices or anything else that is needed due to the crisis.
It also allows more flexibility in open meetings acts as well as emergency meetings? Is that also a part of it, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
So therefore, you know, we don't necessarily have to have a call in present. You know, we can have a bit more flexibility, you know, to be able to have a meeting virtually like we're doing right now. And Dr. IASB, the Illinois School Board, the Illinois Association of School Board recommended having this, having this motion, that the board approved this motion because it might be a conflict later down the line if we didn't. Any other questions at all or comments from board members? Okay. There are none. Roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Agenda item number five, need a recommendation to approve the purchase of the Olive Garden gift certificates for longevity honorees.
So this is Vicky Arrington, and I make a motion that the board approve the purchase of Olive Garden gift certificates for longevity honorees in the amount of $25 per person, 17, for a total of $425.
And a second, please.
Tanya Taylor, second.
Any discussion, any questions? Dr. Jackson? Make a comment about this.
And so normally we would have celebrated all of our five-year increment longevity staff members on April 28th at Olive Garden. And because we will not be able to do that because of COVID and the social distancing, we were asking that everyone be given a gift certificate to Olive Garden in the amount of $25. And as you see on the screen, these are the list of people who would have been honored, Mrs. Lori Christiansen for 35 years, and she is also retiring this year. 20 years for Mr. Roger Nichols, Mrs. Shelley Anne Oparo Seforo, 15 years for Mr. Kenobi, Mr. Jerome Novy, Mrs. Diane Schoenhaidler, Mr. Michael Lazarus, Mrs. Francine Morris, Mr. Matthew Culp, Mrs. Emily Rubenstein, and Mrs. Noreen Lewis. 10 years, Mr. Gabriel Joseph, and five years, myself, Mr. Whitehead, Mr. Valentine, Mrs. Cole, and Ms. Ebony Jones.
Boy, time passes by very fast. And just to mention, they'll still be getting the beautiful awards that Dr. Jackson secured last year, the same company. So they'll get the award and then they'll just get the gift certificate as well. Any questions or comments from board members? If there are none, roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item number six, I need a recommendation to approve the, to continue the internship for Juan McQuarles, please.
Okay. Yes, we are looking at...
Dr. Jackson, hold on, let's do the motion first. Vicky, go right ahead.
So this is Vicky Arrington. I make a motion that the board approve to continue Juan McQuarles' internship through Friday, May 22nd, 2020, at a rate of $15 per hour.
And a second, please.
Tanya Taylor, second.
Dr. Jackson? Or Mr. Lescue, whoever make a comment?
Yes, so Mr. Juan McQuarles has been working with us since, I believe it was earlier this year. And he has been a significant help to the technology department by way of devices. He's been offering professional development to staff members and also helping to make sure that the devices are ready as we continue to provide them for our students while they are on and participating in remote learning. And so we are asking that his internship be extended through May 22nd.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? If there are none, roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Item number seven, we need a recommendation to approve or reapprove the auditing firm Evans Marshall and Pace, please.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I make a motion for approval on contract renewal for auditing firm Evans Marshall and Pace PC for the 2020 through 2021 school year at a cost of $12,550. 2021 through 2022 school year at a cost of $12,800. And 2022 through 2023 school year at a cost of $13,050 for a total cost of $38,400.
And a second, please.
Second. Vicky Arrington.
Mr. Veranik?
Okay. Once again, you have seen this before at a previous board meeting with it. I have no issues with the relationship that they supply for us. They offer high quality, do excellent work. I have a great relationship with Chris, one of the partners of the firm. I can pretty much call him up at any time and get an answer for it. That's very, very good relationship they have. And I also did a cost analysis with the other districts within the Proviso Township. And we are getting a very, very good price for getting the, basically the exact same audit done compared to the other districts.
Any questions for, from any board members? Okay, there are none. I need a roll call, please, Ms. Suarez.
Yes. Board Member Arrington?
Yay.
Board Member Griffin?
Yay.
Board Member Dawson?
Yay.
Board Member Hannah?
Yay.
Board Member Taylor?
Yay.
Board Member Jordan Harret?
Yay.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item number eight, I need a recommendation to approve to attend the Innovative School Summit on Friday, June 26th through Sunday, June 28th in Atlanta, Georgia.
Cheryl Griffin, I make a motion to approve to attend the Innovator School Summit Friday, June 26th through Sunday, June 28th, 2020, in Atlanta, Georgia, with the registration cost of $395 per attendee and hotel cost of $358 plus taxes and fees per attendee. And to also attend the Innovator School Summit Wednesday, July 8th through Friday, July 10th, 2020, in Las Vegas, Nevada, with the transportation cost of $395 per attendee and a hotel cost of $353 plus taxes and fees per attendee.
And a second, please.
Tanya Taylor, second.
Dr. Jackson, any discussion about this at all?
Yes, Mr. Whitehead did submit a proposal for our team to be able to present at both of these summits, and they were accepted. And this would be to further our conversation on equity.
And just to mention, this is probably pretty soon, it's a good chance that both of these events will not be held. Dr. Jackson, any feedback about that at all?
We have not as of yet.
Yeah.
Board Member Dawson, quick question. Because it's around the corner, when we pay, are we assured like a refund or would they just say, we'll hold it, you know, in advance until we do it next year and you'll be prepaid?
Well, as the same thing with the NSBA, if they have to cancel, we would be refunded the money. We do not know if it will be going to the following school year, but we do know that there would be a refund. Typically, it is not held until the next year, you are refunded in the event of cancellation.
In the June one, they may not even agree to take the money because of the, of the issues in Atlanta, Georgia right now. I'd be very surprised, but you know, it's, it's really early because we're thinking about, you know, finishing, whether we're going to, we're not going to have summer school, have virtual summer school. And everybody in the nation is thinking that way. Chicago public school system is as well. Any other comments from any of the board members?
I have one, just one comment. I think it's just to make this a little bit consistent, like when we discussed approval of Q and I, we, we don't have like the number of attendees or who, who's attending. And we at least had in the previous ones, administrators, board, secretary, district. I would just like to see at least a number of attendees or who the attendees would be.
I agree.
Yes. Attendees would be Mrs. Carla Joyner-Harrett, Dr. Sonia Spalding, myself, Mr. Evan Whitehead, Mrs. Beth DeGraff, and Mr. Gabriel Joseph.
Would you like to re send the motion and put that through a motion or do we want to defer it to next month?
Either way, it can be deferred. I just wanted to know how, what, so we're talking about how many people you, you read off. You said Dr. Spalding, Carla, DeGraff, Joseph, you, and Mr. Whitehead, right?
Yes, ma'am.
It should go into motion, though. It should be detailed. You know, they all are. And I actually think it won't impact much deferring it to you, Dr. Jackson?
I do not. I do not.
I really don't think it's going to even happen, to be honest with you. But let's, let's, you know, we have, we don't have this on the table yet. We can defer the motion until we can write up a different motion next month.
Absolutely.
Okay. So that'll be something we can defer until next month. Okay? Is that okay with the rest of the board members?
Cheryl Griffin, that would be fine.
Yeah, Dawson, I'll be fine.
Thank you. Board President's report, moving right along. I really don't have a report. Just wanted to communicate, to just say thank you to all the staff. I'll thank you to our superintendent, our wonderful superintendent, our wonderful administrative team, our wonderful teachers, our wonderful support staff. I'll tell you this, they've been diligent about helping these students and their families transition by making sure that all of them had their one-on-one computers, their lunches, you know, as well as even allowing us to, to see what's going a little bit, you know, from the boardman balcony, looking at class dojo, as well as understanding the interaction that the teachers and students and administrative team members have on Google Doc. Just thank you for your hard work and preparation. This is an unprecedented, unprecedented time. I don't think any of us have ever, ever dreamed that this would happen. That's why I say it's changed a lot this year and a lot of things will impact our students forever, especially our eighth graders. So thank you for all that you're doing and all that I know that you're going to do to try to see what we can do for our students to, to make this time a little bit better, especially our eighth graders. That's really all I have to say, just a big thank you. Moving right along to Dr. Jackson?
Yes, good evening again. Thank you very much. And during this time, when there are so many things that are happening that could keep us down, we do have some good things to be excited about. And so our valedictorian for 2020, Maya D. Harrison. Congratulations, Maya. And our salutatorian is Namari A. Shepherd. Congratulations, Namari. Next, we have, we did not have a chance to attend this because the board was attending the West Cook Dinner. And so just to let you see a little bit about what happened or how everything went on math night. Joshua, can you cue the video?
About an annual family math night. The theme was Geometries and Exploration in Two and Three Dimensional Geometry. Come along to explore the visual side of math with our staff, parents, and students. There were 10 amazing stations where students engaged their curiosity led by our teacher and student facilitators. 10 stations included symmetry, where the students investigated lines of symmetry. Students used cooperation and coordination at the Stick Together poster station. Straw and twist were in high demand to build three-dimensional shapes and polyhedrons. The area station was a big hit with our younger mathematicians. At the Rubik's Cube Station, students worked diligently to solve three-dimensional combination puzzles. At the Fraction Action Station, families worked together to... At the Fraction Action Station, families worked together to create shapes on the GeoBoard using task cards. At the Origami Station, students followed directions to create an origami box to take home to fill with treats. Students and parents made nets to create solids at the Three-D Shapes Station. Parents and children are able to continue the fun at home by participating at the Make and Take Station. Lastly, we end the night with geometry bingo and new or stronger relationships. Thank you for coming to Jelling with Geometry and Lindop School. We hope to see you next year.
Wow. Looked like it was well attended.
It was. And Dr. Spalding and Mr. Kenobi and the rest of the team, they do a magnificent job at putting this together. Mrs. Home, the math coach, she plays an integral role in this and making sure that they're planning and that it is engaging for the students and the families attending. So I'm absolutely, I've heard only positive things about it. Next on our list is four, we do have students, our eighth grade students. I was able to meet with them before COVID did come about. And I started the Superintendent Student Advisory Committee. And if you look at the next slide, it has the actual flyer that is sent out with the to the children as for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So I did get a chance to meet with the eighth graders right before COVID, and it was the end. The next week I would have been meeting with the seventh graders. But it was very, very interesting. I wanted to know what was working well for them at Lindop, what changes they wanted to see, and what impact they would be able to make. Most of them, in fact, all three classes, they wanted to have some independence. They feel like we baby them so much, and they just want to have a little independence. But on the brighter side of that, they knew that it was something that was necessary, and it was really refreshing to be able to hear them sort of problem solve behind and the necessity to make sure that we have things in place so that they are safe at all times. Next, we have two of our students, our graduates from Lindop Class of 2016. Kayla Green received a full ride to Texas A&amp;M University, very, very good news. She was a Lindop Tiger, as well as Tyler Beard, he has a full ride to Georgetown University. So congratulations to Tyler Beard and also to Kayla Green. And Mr. Baranek did talk a little bit about that, but we are excited because we did receive the National School Lunch Program Equipment Assistance Grant for $30,000, as well as the School Maintenance Project Grant for $50,000. So thank you, Mr. Baranek, for completing those applications and congratulations. Next, we were looking before, and those are just the letters. You can go pass that to the next slide, please. Next. All right, before COVID-19, we were also looking to collaborate with PTSO for Playground Equipment Painting. Obviously, we are unable to do that, but we are still looking forward to utilizing them and helping us as well as the community and have an outreach program where we can absolutely beautify our playground. Thank you so much. And that concludes my report as far as the slides go. But as we go into our new normal, let me just tell you a little bit about what the staff has been doing. They've ensured that breakfast and lunches are prepared for children to have throughout the week. There is no breaks in that. As far as our devices are, we have 322 total devices that have been distributed to our students who are in district as well as outplace students. We have virtual NJHS coming, an induction. Everyone has been asking about graduation. The team is brainstorming on that. I do know that today, or yesterday, Mr. Kenobi and Dr. Spalding did head out to the eighth graders and delivered some goodies to them. And they are also doing their ABC countdown with the children. But we're excited and more additional information will be forthcoming, and the administration will be sending out additional information to parents. And we will also be in discussion with the board for SEL on Friday. Yes.
When you talk about that Dr. Spalding and Mr. Kenobi delivered goodies, can you tell us what that means and what what they delivered?
And so, yes, and so every day, so they did ABC and D. I don't think that I'm missing a day or a letter. But they did have, there were some gummy bears, some Albanese gummy bears. They had bubbles for B. They had some chalk for C, and I believe they had donuts for D. And they delivered those to the eighth graders. So they were super excited to be able to see Dr. Spalding and Mr. Kenobi and just to know that they were still being thought of.
Wonderful.
Another thing we're having is Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, we had already talked about this, but we do have our SEL for our staff to making, to make sure that we are okay. Mr. Whitehead has done a good job with that and having global presenters come out. And in fact, tomorrow, Dr. Ruby Payne will be coming to talk to our staff about signs to watch out for and making sure that our children are safe even during this time when we could not physically lay our hands on them. So, or our eyes on them. We were able to see them versus Google, but they are not in our in our close proximity with us. We will be sending an invite to all board members if you'd like to attend tomorrow morning at 8:30. And what I like to say is that I am so very proud of the collaboration that has gone on between the district, the union, the building administration, the teachers, the consultants, and everyone just coming together. And so although this is something that is very different, we do it together. Thank you so much. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Are there any questions from any board members? Okay.
There are. This board member, Brian Dawson, quickly, not a question, a comment. I've heard that there are some districts who have put together a little small, I guess the only word you could call it is a parade, where like the the board and teachers would get in their car and drive through the community and wave to kids. Where they do it like, you know, like a five-minute drive-through and they honk their horns and wave just to say hi to the kids. Maybe you could throw it out to staff and see whether some of them might be willing to do it, get a couple of cars, where everyone's obviously in their own car with, you know, the windows up. But they drove, drive through the community and kind of waved just to say to kids, hey, we love you, we miss you, et cetera, that type of deal, just something. Or maybe a video where all the staff and the board just say, hey, thinking of you, wishing all you the best type of thing for like an SEL day. I was throwing that out there as a idea. That's all. That's it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dawson. The team is working hard, and I do believe that parade is on the list. So we will be getting more information to you just as soon as we can solidify some things and make sure that we're communicating it so that everyone has the same information. But thank you so much, Mr. Dawson.
Sounds like a great idea, Mr. Dawson.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I just had a comment. I would like to thank Dr. Jackson and all, everyone that's working with her beneath her and let them know that we definitely appreciate all of their hard work, especially those working on the grants, getting the funds coming into the school. That is much appreciated.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Yeah, I can't let the opportunity go by. I also have to add my thanks and how grateful I am for, as unprecedented as this is, our preparedness was greater than you may have realized. And so when I talk to other school districts and have been exposed to what others are going through, I'm very grateful for the team that we have at Lindop, that of course includes my fellow board members, that we're very fortunate to have such a team going through this difficult time.
Well, before the opportunity passes as well, I would like to say thank you to the entire Lindop family for everything that they're doing in efforts to help our students get through this time. I know my student, he's ready to get back to school, but the little time that he does have online with his teacher and or his classmates, he can't wait for that time. And yeah, I'm just thankful for everything that that you guys are doing from the superintendent down.
Thank you, Mr. Hannah. There are no more comments. Thank you, Dr. Jackson, for your report. We'll move on to old business number L, committee reports. Finance committee. Ms. Arrington and I met today. Ms. Ms. Arrington, you mind giving an update? Thank you so much.
Well, everything that was on our agenda has been discussed this evening, covered by Mr. Baranek. It was the 2020-21 budget calendar, the discussion on Raymond James G-17 Disclosure Form and Engagement, the 2020 Summer Life Safety Projects, the continuation with the intern that we have, and also the update on the School Maintenance Project Grant and National School Lunch Program that that also Dr. Jackson mentioned. So all those things were on our agenda, on our agenda tonight and has been discussed.
Thank you, Ms. Arrington. We met today at 10:00 virtually, and our next meeting is next Tuesday on the 19th of May. Thank you so much. Personnel committee meeting, there was no meeting this month, no report. Pace Governing Board meeting, Mr. Dawson and Ms. Griffin, or Mr. Dawson?
Okay, there are a couple of things. I'll make them quick. One is we voted to, there were $1,280,000 in special education bond. So that was our most recent vote. That is for the roofing project at Pace that everyone's heard so much about. That vote took place on the 16th, so we proceeded with that. Next, I think the one of the most important things was the busing company for a student that ships our, that takes our students from school to home in this time where our students obviously are not going and using their services. They were looking to possibly be paid. At this point, they were soliciting Pace for an 80% payment for their their services, saying that they, their their personnel were experiencing hardships. To that, the Pace Board pushed back and said that first, you know, since they they weren't working, they should apply for unemployment. As a board, we agreed on that. And also, we said that if we were to consider it, they would have to show us that they haven't furloughed individuals, that they have been, in fact, keeping them on payroll and where that money would be going. But, you know, I wanted to kind of solicit that to the board and let the board know that that was a concern, that the the first student bus company was saying that their workers might leave. And obviously, you know, if school were to come back in, they wouldn't have the personnel. But I don't think it affects us as much now that we've made the decision that school will be over for the school year. So that that's something important that that we need to to know. And lastly, as we are doing very well at Lindop because of our one-to-one with our technology, and that is a blessing, as we spoke about earlier, Pace isn't quite doing as well because they do not have that same number. And so some of our children who are at Pace, you know, Lindop area children who are at Pace do not have technology. But those are the three pressing issues.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dawson. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Dawson? So that didn't go for a vote, did it with the?
Oh, no, not not the, but it would on the the next board meeting. And that's, I mean, that's usually the Tuesday before we meet. And I feel as though as a board, we are against that payment, saying basically if they're not working, if they're not doing anything, the board isn't looking to, you know, to continue to pay them. Unless our board here feels differently, that that is, I think, what's probably going to proceed, unless you want to.
Are they gonna, are they, are they expecting, were they expecting a vote from from board members? It'll be on the agenda or and and or what are they expecting? They wanted you all to take them back. Do you want to poll?
Yeah, I would like to poll the board.
Yeah, I think that'll be helpful.
What people thought.
I do have another question for you, but I'll wait till after the poll because it's not, but just to be able to see how people feel. So the bottom line is Mr. Dawson is saying they want districts to pay 80% with no no other, with no return except for just to be able to keep them financially supported through this COVID process.
President, can I chime in on this?
Please do.
Brian, in regards to the payment to the the transportation company, just my personal opinion, that's definitely not something we would do by me being in that that field of work. If they're not rendering service, why are we paying, paying them? You know what I mean?
Understood completely.
Definitely, definitely. If there you have any questions in regards to any of this, Brian, don't hesitate to give me a comment.
This is Cheryl Griffin. I definitely agree with what what was just said. My also comment is, is that like was suggested during the Pace meeting, those workers are eligible to go and file for unemployment.
That that's correct, Ms. Griffin. Like I said, by me being in that field of work, all of my employees have been directed to file for unemployment. Even though we're trying our best to still compensate our employees, company-wise, they were instructed to file unemployment. So Brian, if I would you, I would definitely tell them to push back to have their employment, their employees file for unemployment. Because I can guarantee you, if they're not already working, they probably won't be working.
Yeah, this is. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
I actually echo what has already been said. I also would like to say that the threat that they won't be available should things go back in order. I don't see that as a strong threat, that they have to be paid to retain them because of the economy being what it is, the marketplace being what it is. So that to me isn't a very strong reason for even wanting to pay them. Other than that, I just echo what everyone else has said. They can apply for unemployment.
Thank you. Tanya Taylor, any comments?
Yes, this is Tanya Taylor. I echoed sentiments as well. For those individuals, I just think that unemployment would be their best source.
Penny Williams-Wolford, I hear you've joined the meeting. Any comments?
Hello, everybody. It's Penny Williams-Wolford. I guess I would err on the side of filing unemployment, but it would, I'm just curious to see what other districts have done in terms of their transportation people. What are they doing? And Board Member Hannah, I'm just curious, some of the districts, have you guys doing some work or have all of the districts stopped your employees, you know, your transportation company from working?
So none of my regular drivers are working right now. The only people that is working is my management team. And that's just on a basis that a couple of districts has reached out to our company just to provide lunches to a certain amount of their students. Not all of the students in those districts are receiving lunches. I don't know what the qualifications were for them to receive lunches, but like I said, it's not for every, we're not delivering to every household. And yeah, everybody's not working.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Mr. Dawson, Mr. Dawson, I wanted to make a comment about what you meant, I know you mentioned to me, Mr. Dawson, what you told them about as far as when you had the conversation about asking them about what 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 kind of like, what do we get in exchange? Can you share that with the team?
Oh, at at one point in the meeting, I. Oh, at one point in the meeting, I asked if we were to offer them something, what they would be willing to do in return. For instance, Mr. Hannah mentioned the lunches. We were doing grab and go at our school, and I just pushed back and said, you know, it's difficult to ask for something for nothing. If we were to pay them, would they be willing to take the grab and goes for us to students' homes and things like that? I mentioned that to, and she's the executive director, I'm sorry, Mary Boa. And she was saying that she doesn't feel as though their request was in exchange for services. It was more in exchange for keeping their services. And so, like I said, I'm bringing it to the board because, you know, I'm just speaking for the board while I'm at Pace, and I just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page as I was. For no services, you know, you wouldn't get any payment. And so they weren't looking to take lunches for us or to run errands or anything. It was just more, you know, can you give us money so that our staff doesn't seek other employment? And at this point, you know, between myself and another member, just, I'm going to keep it quick. First student also services Proviso High School and their membership. So I asked them what they were doing, and he said at this time, they were not paying them. They were not paying them. So that's that. So at this point, I was going to take it back to the next meeting to see that, say that we are all in agreement as a board that.
Yeah, I support you as well. I support what all the other board members said. I don't really have to make any additional comments because you got it, you got the direction from the board. What I do have a question about is what happens if the majority of the districts who are there, there's three more districts that present there, what happens if they agree? Will we still be expected to, since it's a co-op, Dr. Jackson, will we still be expected to participate if they have the majority? Do you know at all, Mr. Dawson?
I believe that it would be just as in with every other contract that we sign. You know, for instance, the roofing project, if one person decided they didn't want to do it, you know, we would all have been liable for that cost. If everyone decided that they wanted to pay the drivers, I believe that we would be responsible for that payment. As I said.
I'm talking about majority, I'm talking about majority.
No, I'm sorry, the majority, that's what I meant, if the majority went that way. But having kind of tested the waters at the meeting, you know, I believe that as a board, we're leaning against non-payment, non-payment.
Madam, excuse me, Madam President?
Go right ahead.
This is Aaron Hannah. Like he said, in effort to retain the drivers, why is that our responsibility as a district to retain their drivers? That's something they need to work on internally. First student's a multimillion-dollar transportation company. So they, that's something that they should work on internally to dig up some money to be able to keep their employees, you know what I mean? I just don't feel like that's something that the districts, I mean, especially our district, not really caring about anybody else, but our district, what we should be concerned about, the retention of their drivers.
Yep. Okay, you have your, you have your direction, Mr. Dawson, from your team. And I tell you this, you see, Mr. Hannah is not playing. This is his area. So thank you for bringing that to the board, and thank you for your report.
Mrs. Harret, may I just?
Yes, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you so much. Mr. Dawson, did you have the understanding that the Pace students do not have devices from Lindop?
That is correct. They were saying that not all students were able to, I'm not talking about like all of the students at Pace. I'm talking about the students who are in Broadview who did not have devices, correct? Not all of the students who are co-op from Lindop had devices. Now, that's something I have to address at the next meeting, but that's my understanding.
Okay, so what I can say with the devices, and I won't belabor this even if, and Madam President, if you want me to just do this offline with Mr. Dawson, I will, but I did want to make sure for the record that you did know that we have been in contact with Pace, and there are students that belong to Lindop that do have their devices. And we are working with Mary Beth Bay and Mr. James to get the list of the other students. When we originally contacted them, they said that they would do paper assignments and that they would need any. Yes, but we are working. I just didn't want you to think that they were left out because they are absolutely not.
Thank you for sharing that, Jackson. That's something that we all should hear about. So thank you for communicating it at the, you know, right now. We appreciate knowing about it.
No problem.
President, may I ask a question?
Right ahead.
Dr. Jackson, the students that are without devices, that are Lindop students, do you guys have a timeline on when they will probably get their devices?
As soon as we receive the information, like I said, we're working with Mrs. Bay and with Mr. James. And we need the information from them. We are ready to go as soon as we have the information. I can talk to you offline about some of the difficulties that we've been having.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else, Mr. Dawson?
No, that's it. Those three points, that's it.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item four, which is the Safety SEL Committee. It's Ms. Williams-Wol, Ms. Williams-Wolford, as well as Mr. Hannah. You all had a meeting on April the twentieth, tomorrow, okay? So there is no other report, correct, right, team?
That's correct.
Thank you. They meet tomorrow. Five policy meeting, Ms. Williams-Wolford, Mr. Dawson, your next meeting is May sixth at three P.M. Para, PIA Committee, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Griffin, your next meeting is April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty at nine A.M.
This is Tanya Taylor. I want to make a comment. President, Joanna Harret, you had contacted me indicating that you wanted to be a part of the meeting.
No, that's negotiations that's coming up. Para, not at all.
Oh, not Para? Okay, I just want to make sure.
No, not at all. So that's April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. Ms. Griffin?
Yes, this is Cheryl Griffin. I just had a question. Are we going to receive an invitation to do that meeting via Zoom?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Technology Committee meeting, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Hannah, and their next meeting, which will probably be virtual as well, May nineteenth, twenty-twenty. The Community Engagement Committee, that's going to be tabled until further notice. Negotiations Committee, that's also pending, and that's the committee that I was asking to be a part of because I thought it was important to have someone present that had the history for this negotiations. And Dr. Jackson, can you give us an update about the time? I know we were supposed to have a meeting last month or earlier this month.
Yes, and we do intend to meet as a team. We have received the proposal from the Teachers Association. And so now we are just going to overlook that, and then we will pin down a meeting date and time, but nothing as of yet.
Yeah, I think things are a little thrown off because of the COVID, as I understand it. Is that right, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, ma'am, and just trying to make sure that the other districts that have been impacted by both attorneys, they could meet their demands there as well. But they have both looked at the district's proposal as well as the Teacher Associations' proposal. And we will schedule a meeting shortly.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments, and there are none, I don't think, Dr. Jackson?
There are none.
Okay, we have no executive session? So I need a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight thirty-nine P.M., please? Anybody?
Tanya Taylor.
I bet.
You go ahead, Vicky.
Oh, I moved up. We're adjourned this meeting at eight thirty-nine P.M. Vicky Arrington.
And a second, a second, please?
Penny Williams-Wolford, a second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great week and stay safe.
Likewise, thank you.
You too.